You ready? Okay. Good afternoon, everybody. I'd like to welcome everybody to our Franklin Township Board of Trustees regular business meeting. Today is May 15, 2025. It's a little after 12:00, I would say 12:04, a little late getting started, technical difficulties. We're hoping maybe some feedback, of all things. Hopefully, you're able to hear us a little bit better online because we now do have hidden microphones, and so you should be able to hear us more clearly. If you guys will bow your heads, and we'll open in prayer. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this sunshine. I know a lot of us will probably complain it's too hot today, but oh, well. We ask that you be with this meeting and that your work be done, and we thank you in your name. Amen. Mike, will you lead us?
Jan.
Jan, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Jan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could have a rule call, sir, when you're ready?
Yes, sir. Mr. Fleishman?
Here.
Mr. Leiser is excused. Mr. Blevins?
Here.
And Ms. Justice is absent.
Okay. Moving on to old business, and I want to comment on this before we go to a vote. Meeting minutes approval for May 1, 2025, regular business meetings. I don't know if we need to word this a little different because they're already up. The minutes are the video, and the video is usually up within three days. So I don't know if we should check with Julie how we would pronounce this as we're voting on it, because normally you can't release the minutes until after it's approved.
I believe that Steve has the answer to that. I think we were advised that we needed to do this. Am I wrong or not?
Since they are audio and video.
Gotcha. There's nothing to approve.
There's nothing really to edit because it's the actual meeting. That I think we're fine with approving those. If they're the written ones where they're transcribed, there are cases where minutes need to be edited.
I just happened to be looking at this when this came out yesterday, and I'm like, hmm. I know in the past that we would spend four or five days going back and forth, he, she, they, thou, and it took a lot of time on staff members' time and order to... Everyone has a different flavor, if you know what I'm saying. So if there's no further questions on meeting minutes for May 1, 2025, regular business meeting, I'd ask for a second.
I'll second it.
I have a second, and if I can have a rule call when ready.
Yes, sir. Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
And Mr. Leiser is excused.
Okay. New business I'm going to start off with. In the House here today, we have Senator Dave DiMora. Is this Eric DiMora?
Bill DiMora, yes.
Okay. Bill, we'll go with Bill. It says Dave. I get myself in more trouble by reading what is given to me. So sure, if you would come right up here and you can address the residents here and your statutes.
Thank you, sir. My name is Bill DiMora. I'm the state senator for at least part of Franklin Township. I just wanted to come here today. Steve and I have met a couple of times, invited me to come out to the township meeting. I want to do that and say hello to everybody. I'm here, I serve at your pleasure. I work for you, so I just want to come introduce myself. Right now, obviously, the state budget is going on. It's in the Senate. I think I've been, I think I have meetings every 15 minutes. I'm in the State House for people that want to get in the budget. And so that's the biggest thing right now, basically, the Senate right now has been budget, budget, and more budget. We have the budget. We have to pass it by June 30. So the Senate will get done probably by the first week of June, and then it'll go to conference committee, and then we'll vote it out by the end of the month. Those of you who probably heard, we just passed a complete overhaul of our electric utility, the way we regulate utilities in the state. We got rid of the OVEC, which is people were paying money on coal plants that didn't work, that it was all part of the scandal, the House built a fix scandal several years ago. We got rid of all that money that people were paying that didn't provide anything to Ohioans. So we got rid of that. We're regulating utilities differently. They have to come in for rate cases more often. It was actually a completely bipartisan bill, and it was probably the most consumer-friendly utility bill in the history of the state since utilities became governed and became monopolies. So we passed that before we started the budget. Otherwise, I'm here to answer your questions. The chair talked about the property tax bill that was... I'm on the ballot board. We voted yesterday that it was just one ballot issue. They now have the ability to go out and collect signatures to get on, to get on the ballot that people vote to eliminate property taxes in Ohio. They need 412,000 ballot signatures, and they have to get enough, a percentage of signatures from 44 of the 88 counties. There's no way to do that for this year's ballot. It's just impossible. As somebody who's done petitions for a living, it takes $3 million and hundreds of volunteers to get that many signatures in that many counties in this amount of time. They'd have to file them by right after the 4th of July, which is, there's no way they're going to do it for this year's ballot. I think they're trying to get it in our 2026's ballot. Hopefully, by then, the legislature will act and try to reduce the property tax burden, especially on seniors, especially on people with fixed incomes. There have been several bills, including a couple that I've introduced, that have not been acted upon. There are things we can do that are bipartisan right now. Raise the homestead exemption, double it, basically, is what the plan would be, to put in circuit breakers so that once you up to a certain percentage of your income, you can't pay anymore for property taxes. One of my bills was to freeze income taxes on seniors, people that are over 72 years old and make under $125,000, have been in their houses for at least 10 years. Their property taxes will be frozen at the rate prior to the rates that just occurred, and they would have the same, they know how much property tax you're going to pay as long as they live in that house. When the house was sold, the person who bought that house has to go through whatever property taxes are at that point in time. Another solution is to pay, for seniors to pay whatever they can. Say if you had $5,000 a month, I mean, $5,000 a year with property taxes, you could only pay $2,000 out of the month, where you pay that $2,000 over the course of the year. The state would make up the difference to schools and to local governments. And then when the house was sold, that money that you didn't pay would be recouped from the sale of the house, and then you'd be made whole. The state would be made whole for that. Now, of course, the person that would inherit the house would lose that money, but again, in the case of senior citizens, you can only pay what you can afford to pay, and the state would make up the difference so that made up when you do that. All these solutions have bipartisan support. The trouble is the leadership of both the House and the Senate decided they don't want to talk about this yet. So the frustration of some citizens to get this on the ballot is real, but as we all know, without property taxes, you're not going to fire police, roads, bridges, you know, cleaning out the snow, schools, you wouldn't have any of those things. But property taxes are about 60% of what most local governments take in for their income. I mean, property taxes are number one, followed by income tax and sales tax. And of course, sales tax, being the most aggressive, people that can't afford to pay it pay the most percentage of that of their income. So those are the biggest issues going on right now in the State House. I'm going to take any questions from you or anybody you want me to.
So one of the biggest things is what we see when we have homestead. How does municipalities and townships get compensated? Because we have a lot of seniors that live in our area.
Right.
As you know, we failed a levy that was called a township wide levy that would allow incorporated and unincorporated that would have to pay if they annexed into a municipality such as a city since 2004.
Right.
So I don't think a lot of people understood, like the old GM site, that place would have been paying probably about 1.2 million on a $5.2 million budget that we have, which we can't collect more. So I think educating people on that would have helped, but looking at these changes that you're seeing, how does the state help fund the backside of what we're going to lose on our budget? How do we keep our fire and police?
Yeah, so as you all know, the local government fund has been cut drastically since the previous administration before this current governor. I've, one of my first budget amendment, two years ago, my first budget amendment this year, is to increase the state of local government fund to where the levels that were prior to former Governor Kage, it's cutting them in half. So that's my first thing, and I fight for local governments because you guys are where the rubber meets the road, and you guys need the money. The state has a $3 billion rainy day fund that they can make up the money that potentially would be lost from some of these entities if we're going to, if we're going to freeze their income taxes. But again, you're not losing new, you're not losing, you're getting the same amount that theoretically we'd get, that you have right now, you're just not getting any increase for those people to be increased, and the state would have to make that up. That's the whole purpose of this, is the state needs to take more of a burden of it. Of course, right now, the state doesn't want to take that burden, and their budget priorities right now are completely different than, I mean, they want to give tax cuts again, they want to give the Browns $600 million to build a dome stadium outside of downtown Cleveland, which I oppose. The way they want to spend money is different than the way I want to spend money to help local governments.
So we're having to close one station down, potentially, and we still have to have that discussion, but yet they're going to take taxpayers' dollars to build a stadium.
Again, I'm, those of you who might, if you read the news a couple of weeks ago, I actually put a bill in just to screw with the people, the owners of the Browns, and I put into my bill, said that you have to have a winning record three of the last five years, or you can't get money to build stadiums. And of course, the Browns only have a record two of the last 27 years, so that was kind of a shot at the Haslins. They're not big supporters of mine right now, obviously, because I took a shot at them. Again, I think it's ridiculous. The Haslins are worth $14 billion. You know, Jerry Jones built Jerry World out in Arlington, Texas with his own money, did whatever he wanted to do, it was his money, he can do whatever he wants to do with it. The Haslins are worth $14 billion. They can build a stadium that costs them $2 billion, $2.5 billion, if they want to with their own money and do whatever they want with it. But if they want taxpayer money, which I don't think we ought to give them, then they need to, again, I'm opposed to giving taxpayer money to billionaires to build any kind of stadium. So that, that million money, I would rather spend helping local governments. I suggest, obviously, to levy back on this fall. It turned out we had, this past primary was, I mean, 8% in the county, probably less in this township. City of Columbus was barely 6%. With potentially other things going on the ballot in November, with probably more school levies going to be on the ballot, with other stuff going on, you might be able to get a higher people, I don't know if you want a higher turnout or lower turnout, I don't know what, I didn't look at the election results for Franklin Township for the levy, but you know your voters better than I do, is it better to have more people vote or fewer? And maybe you can, and I can help with this, if you want to do mailings to voters saying, we need this to, for police, for fire, we're going to close down this if we don't do this, make sure the roads are cut clean in the winter, maybe you actually want to run it as a campaign in order to convince people that we need this levy to have their basic government services kept the way they expect them to be.
So let me ask you two, and I know you probably have questions, so I apologize.
I don't really have a question. I have a statement.
So you talk about the budget that's got to be done and et cetera by June or something.
June 30 by statute, yeah.
Is there ever an opportunity for someone, like, for instance, this is your district, a lot of times, like, equipment that we need, like a fire truck, or something that could go back to benefit our residents of Franklin Township?
Yes.
We're talking a million-dollar piece of equipment. The building you're standing in is probably over 80 years old. How do we qualify to be able to get on that budget to maybe get a new building?
Those are capital budget expenses. This is the operating budget. Those are capital budget expenses that we dealt with last year, we'll deal with next year. I absolutely suggest that Steve and I get together, there are forms you fill out to turn in to my office, to other senators' offices, because I think part of your district is also Michelle Reynolds, and part of your district might be Herschel Craig of the Lions, I mean, you kind of, I think, might be in three different districts, I don't know what the Lions. But absolutely, there are things you put out, I turn those in as amendments to the capital budget asks that I make as part of my district, and a fire truck is certainly something you could ask for. Improvements is building is, I mean, Grandview is building a new service safety thing with budget they got in the capital money they asked for last time that I was able to get them. Trails are all capital budget money. This is absolute capital budget money. You absolutely get with me. Again, this is, the operating budget is what we're doing right now. Operating budget is not capital stuff. It is funding the state departments, agencies that deal with Medicaid and homelessness and food, and you know, food banks, libraries, that is what the operating budget does. The operating budget is not for fire trucks or for building improvements for townships. That's the capital budget, and absolutely should do that and get that stuff in next year, and I will work with you. There are also places you can get grants for fire trucks, Vali View Village, I went to their township meeting, they had, they needed another police car, and my office had them find a couple of different grants they could apply to help money get for a new police car. My office will do that for you, just call that number, email that, and we will get on that, helping you try to find grants, because there are grants out there for fire trucks, for safety equipment.
So my last question to you, or statement, and to the people watching at home, one of the, I'm going to give you a scenario. As you know, on this levy, if it would have passed, it would encompass people that have annexed and are building apartments. We get the property tax off of that. So if you had a field that was worth $30,000, we were not getting much money, it got annexed, it got developed, and they put $10 million of apartments on it. That property tax now is very valuable. We don't see it because it goes to the city of Columbus. So having that levy that we just failed would have meant more money coming in, but we cannot, cannot stress enough, we cannot go over the 5.2 mil that is set by the state. So that means what you and I would have paid would have been less money, potentially. We can't say because you don't know until it's completely built. We couldn't share numbers with everyone because they're still in the building process up north of us. So what I'm getting at is this, if this other method of property tax goes away, we're just free pickings for the city to come in and annex us piece by piece. Local government's gone. However, your position is still the same, because if we go into the city, you're still our senator, but what do we do to be able to stay a township? And I personally would like to go as a representative of the people of Franklin Township, speak on the floor about one-way annexation that needs to change. If you had somebody that is wanting to be in Franklin Township right across the street from here, they sign the paperwork, and we vote on it, it goes through. Identically to what it works now, if across the street wants to go into the city of Columbus, they fill out the form, they're paying their 250, whatever it is, it goes to the city council, guaranteed it goes into the city. So we need it to be an equal street to go back and forth. Every time we, this area, as you know, this is the last area that God left land. We have the Westland Mall area.
Correct.
We had the casino area. There are no more areas of picking that have land like we have. That's why it's moving west now and south.
Correct.
So we need to preserve, we need someone that's going to fight for us, that is going to say, we need new legislation on how things are annexed. We don't get a say in it. I've went to county commissioners' meetings, and they said, not up in my house, you're not doing this. And basically, we were laughed out of there because they said they have no course, they have to act on it, and they have to say yes when they vote on it. Then why vote on it? What happens if the council would have said no? You know, your county commissioners would have said no. What would have happened? But it's nice what you do, and we appreciate everything, but we really need some help here to set some old guidelines that is so antiquated that we're easy pickings. And the only way you're going to know what a township was?
Is talk to townships, right.
Is to go to a museum.
I mean, listen, I know the Township Association fights for townships across the state. I mean, I meet with them regularly, they come to my office. I think everything they've asked for in, during lame duck last year, they got, I mean, I helped to give them get some stuff that they wanted out of the bill, out of the bill. It was a Christmas tree bill at the end of last year, they put everything in. Again, Steve, yourself, the township, your lobbyists, or the Township Association ought to come in. Issues like this come up all the time. We can draft legislation and get it, and get it hearing in front of whatever committee put it in. Unfortunately, you don't get to talk on the floor of the Senate, only members do, but committees are open. Last night, I was in committee about budget stuff. It started at 6 o'clock, I left the State House at 5 till 10, and there was ordinary citizens coming in about what they thought parts of the budget they wanted in, parts of budget they wanted out of the current capital budget. Most people, they were talking about the Ohio Housing Trust Fund, or talking about the Brownfield remediation part of the budget, or they were talking about getting rid of the PBMs when it comes to Medicare, Medicare prescriptions, so that ordinary pharmacies, local pharmacies can make money. Those were probably 30 of the 44 people that testified last night. Again, there are bills that affect townships. I'm sure Steve knows who your lobbyists are for the townships. I will set up a meeting if that's what you want me to do with you guys, the Township Association folks. Steve, in my office, I'll have other offices there, and we can talk about this, absolutely. Because that's, again, I don't draft the bills. The LSC drafts bills, and drafting a bill is, I mean, people that do that stuff, I don't know how they want to get up in the morning, because it's a very tedious, arduous task to do all that stuff, but I'm willing to help draft a bill to get that happen.
And that's what we need, someone that's bigger than me. You know, your tie is a bigger knot than my tie, because I'm just local.
Yeah.
However, just to give you an example of what we go through about easy pickings, sir, how many runs did you take in the city of Columbus last year? Roughly?
10,000.
10,000. So these people here that support the fire department, et cetera, we help under mutual aid. But we don't get the help that we need. And it's like, when you always are a giver, when is it time to be a receiver? So, sir.
I mean, the best, I would say, the most perfect example of that is what the city of Columbus did with Grandview for the Grandview Yard project they did. And there was a mutual agreement about money and finances, and who got this money and who got that money. Again, Westland Mall might be one of those things that you might, I mean, let's be honest, I'm sure that when Westland Mall was developed, the city of Columbus, they're going to want to annex it, and the city's going to want to annex it. I mean, that's, we're not going to kid each other, that's probably what's going to happen. I know that for a fact, but I'm a betting man, I put money on that, what probably was going to happen. So you can make a deal and say, you know, we want this, this, and in turn, we want this, because that's what they just did in Grandview Yard, so there's a, there's a history of doing just that. And that's something that you definitely, I mean, I met with the developers of that. I think that, and they want to put an amphitheater in there, and some senior housing and medical buildings, at least the plan that I saw, again, I think that the city of Columbus would like something different going in there than an amphitheater. Again, I know that for a fact, but that's my, that's my educated guess on that. So, but deals can be made in order to let them annex it, to get money back for the township, because that's what Grandview, city of Grandview did with Grandview Yard.
So it's almost like, give me your milk money, and I won't hit you.
I mean, again, negotiating, I mean, yeah, I mean, sometimes you need to stick. I mean, I'm going to tell you, sometimes you need to stick, because you're David and Goliath, you know, David wins once in a while.
Yeah. And that's, sitting in this seat, I always represent, and I'm a resident, and I can't see myself wishing to take a deal because I'd rather stand up against David. I'd rather be beaten by David than be afraid of David. So.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we're going to wrap this up.
Okay.
So I'm just, I just got an observation. So every case that you laid out on potential senior taxes changing and things like that, in my mind, as you said those things, those are still reductions. Do you understand what I'm trying to say? It's going to be less money coming to Franklin Township.
Definitely not less money. It's the same money you have frozen, you don't get additional.
Okay.
So.
Well, we need the additional to function.
I understand that, and the state.
Everything else is going up every day.
Absolutely.
You understand?
The state is supposed to be, again, the plan is the state makes up the difference.
Okay.
Down schooling. Again, the state has a $3 billion rainy day fund that, I mean, property taxes are a crisis. It's a rainy day for property tax people in the state of Ohio, and that money is just sitting there, and they don't want to spend it. Again, they want to give all these things that don't help ordinary citizens, and people need property tax relief, and the state ought to be able to, rainy day fund money to make up the difference so that seniors can take a break, so that schools are made whole. I mean, I want it, this would not make, it would just burden, less burden on the individual and more of a burden on the state to provide that revenue, absolutely. That's the whole point of it.
Sure. Thanks for coming.
Absolutely.
So just, go ahead, sir.
Senator, I would like to thank you for your support with the Westland development in that grant.
Yes.
We do, we appreciate that support. Thank you.
I commend you because we would have not been able to do what we've been able to do with that. It's very hard to just say, okay, we'll, rather than get nothing, we'll do this. It's very hard when someone's knocking on your door, saying that it's been in the township forever. So it's, it's a hard pill to swallow. So at this time, what I'd like to do is open the floor in case someone has a question. Let's kind of keep it brief, because we've, I've monopolized a lot of this time, but anyone who has a question, yes, Brenda.
Okay, so, one, the tax abatements means that there's no tax being paid on them apartments that are being built that were annexed from the township to the city. So we wouldn't have been able to collect anything on them. So also, what can the state do to help us with the developers to offer them something so that they don't automatically go to the city? Because they would have a lot easier time to come before the board here, to be able to get their building and zoning and planning and all that, but they can't, they won't do it because the city is offering the tax abatements. Even if we have the water and sewer, David Hodge, the attorney for several developers...
I know David Hodge, he and I have gotten in many a battle.
And me and him too. But he flat out said, it's because I'm getting a 15- or 30-year tax bait, and I don't have to pay no tax.
I'll be honest with you, that, I mean, David Hodge and I almost came to blows once, because I was on the Columbus border zoning adjustment for several years. And I know I would have. And because he was completely out of line on something that I voted against, it was his, and because the citizens of that area didn't want it. Listen, I, I think tax abatements, there's no reason to give tax abatements in Franklin County because people want to move here as it is. You give tax abatements to increase, to help people go someplace that right now no one wants to go to. There's no place in Franklin County that people don't want to go to, because, again, we're expecting 200,000 more people in Franklin County in the next 10 to 12 years. So there's no reason to give tax abatements anyplace in Franklin County, because Plumb is going to come here anyhow, because there's not a lot of land left, as the, as the chair said. So I didn't, I mean, and tax abatements, they do, they take away money from local government, they take away money from schools, the schools hate them. And right now, you know, one entity gives tax abatements, the other entity tries to make tax abatements, and people are just fighting to make themselves to give away taxpayer, to give away money that's going to come in to help services. So I'm not a big tax abating guy to start with. I can't tell the city of Plumb what to do and not to do. I mean, obviously, the city of Plumb is on the water, and they're going to continue on the water as long as I'm probably going to be alive, and hopefully, I mean, hopefully I live a long time, I don't think that's changing. So, but again, tax abatements are bad, and we don't need, again, if you're living in Morgan County, which is off I-75 south of Zanesville and south of Muskingham, and that will, that's probably the 88, out of 88 counties of population in the state of Ohio, you offer abatements because no one is coming there otherwise. You have to give all kinds of tax breaks and abatements, because you're begging for people to come there, because you want to hopefully get the income tax of those people that are, and local businesses, sale tax to offset what you're giving them. But Franklin County doesn't need that. Again, no one, we are not begging people to come Franklin County, they're coming here, whether we want them here or not, they're coming, because we're one of the fastest-growing areas in the nation right now because of all we provide here, still affordable to live, we don't have hurricanes, we don't have, you know, we don't have, we don't have flooding. Well, we have some flooding, but we don't have hurricanes, we don't have massive earthquakes, you know, we tend not to have droughts because we got Lake Erie, we've got the rivers here, so people want to move here, and we don't need to offer abatements, because we don't need to incentivize them, because they're coming here anyhow. So I agree with you, the abatements are not helping anybody, especially for housing. We are shortage of housing right now in this county and in central Ohio. We're already something like 19,000 units behind what we should be at today, and that doesn't count the units every year that we need to increase the population that's coming here, so there's no reason to ask abatements for housing. People who are going to build housing, I mean, I'm going to quote the movie, if you build it, they will come because they're coming anyhow, anyhow, we don't have to build abatements for that. So I agree with you on that.
So is there anything though that the county or that the state can do? Because they offered Kittle Property Group in Westland Mall for that senior housing. They gave them, I think it was a four-point something percent tax.
Well, they can't do, only the, only the government entity can offer tax breaks and offer, they, I mean, the, the developer can't offer, I mean, it has to, it can only come from government entity. Only government entity can say no big tax breaks. I don't know, I mean, you guys have that property, so only you could give that entity a tax break right now.
Well, according to the article, it did say that the state was the one that gave the.
The state gave, the person that, oh, the developer to come in and make something? So that was, that's development then? I could talk to the developer because I don't, I did not know that. Um, uh, I know they gave money to revitalize that because it was a brownfield before that and they gave money to clean that up to make sure the development could come in there. I did not know they gave, see, I'll, I'll have to look into that because I did not know that.
I think, I think the county.
The county did that?
I think Franklin County gave the abatement on that.
I thought it said the state did because it had, it said something about the wine and that.
So it could have been Jobs Ohio, if they're creating jobs, again, that's, Jobs Ohio does that. Jobs Ohio has no, we are not allowed to question Jobs Ohio at all. They have, they've been put behind a wall that they don't answer to the legislature, they don't answer the public records, they don't answer anybody. Um, and which, trust me, I'm not happy with. I actually asked the Department of Developer, Development Director, Director Mahalik in committee just last week, I said, I said, I'm here to ask you these questions because I can't ask these questions of Jobs Ohio because they've been, they are, they are exempt from all public records requests. And it's frustrating because I don't know, I don't know, no one knows what their criteria are to give anybody money, no one knows what their criteria are, what they do with that money that they get from all the liquor proceeds instead of Ohio, no one knows any of that stuff because it's, it's been shielded before I was legislature. And it's, I think it's ridiculous, but unfortunately, there's nothing I can do about that right now. But so I will give that for you.
Okay. So any other questions before we move on? Here are none, I closed the floor.
Thank you.
And I thank you, sir, for coming out.
You've got my numbers, call me anytime.
Yes, that'd be great.
Thank you for coming here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to just, I'm going to be crazy.
Sure. Okay, so.
I don't see anybody here from the Sheriff's Department.
Okay, so I'm just going to.
Over Patty Spencer.
So we don't have anyone here for the Sheriff's Department, so next up I'm going to be is Patty Spencer with Southwestern. That's a hard pill to follow, huh?
You know, I do my best. I, I, and, and the fee to annex is 125.
Is it 125?
Yeah.
I thought it was 200, like 250.
It, either one, it's, it's a drop in the bucket.
Yeah.
And, um, there's nothing, they come before us and, and it's happened a couple times and I can say no, I've said no, doesn't matter. I got four other people that'll say yes, so.
Yeah.
And even if we said no, it goes to development.
Right. They're going to say yes.
And even if they said no, it travels up to city council and that's where it goes.
I don't think city council has ever said no to annexing any property.
I don't believe they have either. But anyway, um, few things. Under health and safety, um, the Ohio's kids can eat for free in summer. All children ages one through 18 are eligible to receive free meals at participating USDA Summer Food Service Program sites. And I have the flyer for that, um, for more information, um, to help kids. Um, Franklin County Crisis Center, um, has an open house. Uh, please join Adam H. of Franklin County for their new Crisis Center Open House. It did, it's today, 4:00 to 6:00 PM. Um, the Crisis Center will provide a safe and secure location, offering a full array of services. Um, they intend to benefit everyone from individuals in crisis and their families to overcrowded hospitals and, um, first responders. And I've just got a little flyer on that. Um, over the weekend, you know, Mother's Day, and Tuesday we had our meeting here. And I said something to our co-chair, I said, my son took me to Franklin Park Conservatory and he's like, oh, that's nice. I said, yeah, I said, but dang, I said, those, the tickets to get in was like 40, $47. And he looks at me and goes, you know, you could have gotten in for free. I'm like, no, I couldn't have. Yeah, you could have. I'm like, what do you mean? So he proceeds to tell me, and I saw this in our information, Columbus Metropolitan Library Central Cultural Pass Program. Um, Jazz Arts Group is the newest organization to join the library's growing list of community arts organizations, offering free tickets to the community. What you need for this is a Columbus Library card. If you have, now I have a Southwest area, uh, area, South. Southwest Library card.
Yeah.
And I said, I can't use that. And he goes, no, but you can apply for a Columbus card too.
Anyone can.
Oh. So I, there's a list on here of all the programs right now that are offered. If you go and get the library card and, and go into the link and apply for tickets, you can get free tickets. Kappa, the Zoo, Pro Musica, I mean, there's a lot. Ballet Met, I thought was pretty cool. Um, Coda is beginning to offer late night services, um, starting a 24-hour transit system. They're expanding that. Uh, it will include most of the downtown lines and 17 crosstown lines will now operate past midnight. And there's a link to Coda, um, to find out if you're, if you do the buses, if you're on that, um, pass. And then, of course, the seniors arrive for less. If you're 65 or older, you can receive 50% off of Coda fares. Show them a photo ID or apply for a senior ID. And I've got the, um, link for that as well. And that's all I have.
Okay. I'm going to open the floor at this time, or did you let me, I apologize. Um, open the floor at this time, if anyone has any questions.
Do you have any openings on your commission?
Um.
For somebody from Franklin Township? That lives in your area, of course.
Yeah, well, they have to live within our area. I think, I think according to our bylaws, you can have some outside, but you would be like at will or something like that to, you wouldn't be able to vote.
A township member wouldn't be able to vote, according to the city of Columbus, though.
I don't know what our bylaws say.
We've had members, we've had.
No, our bylaws are not the city of Columbus bylaws.
Yeah, we've had two different members.
Yeah, you have had in the past, two different members that were on years ago, so.
Township residents.
Um, yeah.
Any other questions?
If you come to a meeting, um, and talk to the chair.
Who is the chair now?
Liz Reed.
There was a lady that was an attorney at one time, that was, I can't remember.
Oh, Stephanie Coe. Yeah, she, she stepped away.
Several years ago.
Around 2020 or 2019.
Okay, okay. Any other questions? Here are none, I closed the floor. Thank you very much, Patty, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Uh, next up, we're going to go with the Police Department, Chief, whoop, question, I apologize, I skipped over that. Thank you, sir.
Lauren.
So, um, next, we're going to go to, um, thank you for keeping me in line. Um, the public comments, um, remember you have three minutes to, um, speak what you want to speak. First up is Brenda Fuller.
Yeah.
Just use your phone.
Mm-hmm.
She's, he's got, just using his phone for three minutes.
Okay, so, anyway, I wanted to let you know that there is a full commission zoning meeting tonight.
Tonight?
Tonight, 6:30, uh, the LaShetka Building on Riverside Drive. I can give you the information after the meeting. But I just want to say, we have to find a way to stop these developers. Um, I, I meant to call you, but obviously, but anyway. So, uh, Dave Hodge did flat out say that he is annexing into the city because, um, the tax abatements, straight up, has nothing to do with water, sewer, because he knows he could get the water and sewer with or without the annexation.
Right.
So.
This building has city water and sewer.
Right, a lot of the township does. So, anyway, I wanted to bring that to your attention. Um, and there's a few other things I'd like to speak with you about after the meeting.
Okay.
Um, also, you know, my heart goes out to Bob Arnold.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, for the loss of the levy. Um, and I love our department heads and we have to, that, that's what's holding township together. Without them, we don't have nothing. And I think that there's a lot of benefits and things that they need to keep with their MOUs. That's all I got to say.
Okay, thank you.
You have a comment.
Uh, moving on, um, now we go to, let me just get where we are, yeah, Police Department, Byron Smith.
Yes, sir. Don't lose it when you get this early.
Should we do the all rise?
Yeah. I just have a couple things. Um, in the last 30 days, we have had zero noise complaints called into us. Uh, we have had five neighbor complaints which have been addressed throughout the township, nothing specific in the area. Um, the point with that is, and, and I talked to Joe too, i- if there is a complaint, it's imperative that people call the sheriff's office because not only does it give us a paper trail, but it'll get an officer out so much faster. Because the deputies don't know it if we're texting or calling individuals or, or whatever.
Okay.
Um, ATV complaints, it's an ongoing issue. We've had five of those in the last 30 days. Uh, in addition to those complaints, we are trying to proactively work on it as a team. So I just want to make the board aware that we are working on the problem.
Do we know where, um, majority of them are coming from?
Oh, they're, they're all from Hart Road, yeah, the prime.
Have we addressed it with the actual resident?
Yes.
And then they still continue to?
Well, some do, some don't. Um, I have a note for one, uh, that happened on Hart Road where, uh, Kidwell spoke to the homeowner, um, he did not wish witness the bike on the roadway, but he did advise that he would take the bike.
Sure.
And also the noise ordinance, because the bikes are typically not loud enough and it's, if it's out later, uh, hour into the day, then, you know, you can qualify for that also. I just wanted to.
So.
I've got many calls on my own street where a gentleman that lives in the city, but he
comes through our neighborhood or our street, his exhaust goes through his hood, there is no exhaust, it's just.
Right.
Like a, like a, like a tractor. Yeah, just a straight pipe. How, and without you guys seeing that or, or et cetera, we'd have to give you an idea of times that he comes through, correct?
Yeah, it's an ongoing violation, uh, but there are separate sections for loud exhaust, uh, vehicle equipment violations that we would use to.
You can hear him from a mile away, he gets, he loves a little drive because it's a straight shot.
Right. Does he go like from Wilson only down to church or?
Yeah, he goes to the Macklin and Turley.
Back in Harris.
Yeah, and the, the beauty of it, I've been trying because, but usually either I'm at my desk or I'm on the phone, I want to get a good video because, um, it shows your speed on that sign.
Right.
You know, so I'd love to get a video of that.
If we can get a tag number too, that can, that can help us pinpoint where it would be coming from.
No, I know exactly, I've got the address for you.
Yeah.
I gave it to Lieutenant.
Okay.
So he has it.
So that's something we can proactively look for.
Right, right.
Um, any questions on this? Um, Peabody, and I, I know this is probably on Steve's agenda too. So apparently we've had some new developments since you and I have talked, Mike. So it's my understanding the land lease has been either revoked or is no longer valid. So I haven't gotten to the bottom of that, so I, I don't know, but I was told this morning that it is not no longer valid.
From the railroad company.
It's my understanding, yeah, we may.
That's what you think, Captain.
That's my, yeah, that would be my assumption.
Okay.
Um, I can't imagine the one that wanted the lease would.
No, no, I just, I just want to make sure, only because I told you this morning when I talked to you, I'm getting some of these different, uh, projects.
Right.
Confused, so we're definitely talking about where.
Peabody and the.
Yep, okay.
Um.
Are we talking about the one in the curve?
No, we're talking about it over here in Brakesale.
Okay, yep, sit back there, I'm going to have all the cars.
So Pete took control parking on Peabody, I, I did a, kind of a map for Steve, we need to put no parking signs on both sides of the roadway. And that would give us the ability to enforce no parking. That would take care of the criminal aspect of it that we can handle. Um, without a lease, if we can get the railroad's assistance, then we can possibly remove the vehicles like we were originally going to as abated vehicles.
Okay.
So that would be the plan to see where we can do that. If we cannot, for some reason, it falls into zoning, we would have to either use the drunk motor vehicle statute and try to do it from there, um, or use the county zoning, or probably most likely a combination of both to rectify that problem. So that will definitely take some time.
Okay.
Um, but it's, we're working on it and, yes, you can talk more about the, the signs and how long that takes. Six-one-four cars, we're working on that, keeping cars out of the berm. Um, any other ongoing issues we find we're going to address, uh, any kind of criminal element or activity, and I'll, I'll advise the board as a team with that.
Okay.
No noise complaints, as of yet, we're actively.
Should, those type of calls should go to the non-emergency number, correct?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, because that's what I've been advising.
Yes.
You know, when I get somebody calls me and tells me and I got to do something and everything, I say you call the non-emergency number.
Because it's going to give a paper trail that, one, you called, um, two, if, even if every officer's tied up, they'll care it. So if there is a deputy driving by, most likely they're going to try to address it for us.
And many times you've addressed this as a trustee and as, when I was a resident, that's no good for them to call a trustee and to me to call you and, but they could have gotten much quicker action if they just followed the procedures that are set up in place.
Then it's in the queue.
Yeah, then it's in the queue. It, it's not a problem to call an officer, but the problem is you limit how many people know about that situation.
Yeah.
Whereas if it goes out on radio, you may have two or three deputies that drove by who would have stopped, but they didn't know. You know, so there, there is a benefit to calling.
Sure.
Um, Fisher Road, I'm sure it's on Jim's agenda, so we met with the, I don't know if he's actually the owner or not, or the countertop company, but most of those vehicles and all that stuff belongs to him. I do believe, he seemed receptive, he would probably move that stuff. And I believe Jim, am I correct, was still thinking of cable and from the building side, just down there with no parking, no trespassing.
I stopped by there on the way in this morning and looked like they were working on one and I went to try to get around him, but there was three vehicles left.
Right. So, there were five and two or three of them didn't have wheels, so I guess it's something so far. Um, that's all I have.
Okay.
Just, just to expand on it, Chief, I do have, uh, our township attorney, I sent her the documents, she's reviewing. But she said he gave me a map, that's in the description of the resolution that I have Julie looking at.
Okay.
So as soon as we get that back, I'll have it to the trustees and we can start the process of getting Peabody registered with municipal court.
Okay. And then, um, is there any questions?
I do have something. Uh, this is for all three of the department heads, so we can just do this one time, I won't have to ask each of you when we're here at the podium. We spoke the other day about a schedule coming to the trustees, your work schedule, you, you understand what it is I'm asking for? Are we good to start on Friday?
That, correct me if I'm wrong, that's one of these, was it like a two week that?
You can do one week, you can do, what, I was doing two weeks because you get paid every two weeks. However, it'd be less work for you, would only have to do it twice a month, just send out what you think your work schedule is. It's, you know, obviously if it changes, it changes, I don't need that it changed, I'd just like to know if you're in, then I can contact you. If you're not in, I don't want to contact you, unless I have to contact you, that's the purpose for asking. So you're good?
I'm good.
And I'm, so Bob's nodding yes, and, and so I do have some questions. Could you give a quick update on Ju- uh, Justice Mann, Justin Mann and Michael Steed on how things are going? I met with Steed and Kidwell in the parking lot the other day when I came through, and they were getting ready to serve a warrant. And so I'd just like an update on how things are going.
Both are actually doing great, they're about thirty percent through. Um, they'll be swapping trainers, one will go to Wendell, one will go to, to Kidwell, they're gonna flip flop. Um, they're both progressing, you know, Mann has a lot more experience, so he is, you know, gonna progress a little faster than, than Michael is. Um, but both of them are exactly where they need to be.
And then can you give an update on to the board, uh, for hiring, because we have expectations, you and I had a conversation. There's expectations that we could be losing a couple more officers, and you said you had some people that maybe are in the pipeline. I just want everybody to be on board because we have meetings and then people aren't all on the same page. So if you and I have a conversation, it seems to be, fall on me to make sure everybody knows, so that's what I'm doing here today.
So, I believe it was in the February, maybe early March, when I let the board know that Nathan Welch and, uh, Cole McClasky were in the process for the sheriff's office. Um, they have been progressing through that. Um, I see no reason why they will not get a final offer, that class starts in August, so I would assume we will be, and I don't know when in August yet. So we will probably be losing them sometime late July, early August. Uh, we are looking at another individual from Fairfield County, um, and possibly, uh, bringing him back, um, a rehire that left. Um, Jake Johansson to go to, uh, back to Ross County. He left him in good standing, gave us two weeks notice, uh, had no disciplinary issues, was a good officer. Uh, so we are gonna look at him again, um, right now, those are the only two I have.
And then for the sake of time, and James isn't here, I asked you to bring in the sheet that you and I corrected, we worked together on and created a sheet. And this stemmed from the report that I asked for officer, or asked from you about all of the violations, uh, with the police department. And this, and Kidwell put it together, and then once we got other, the information from this, you and I sat together, down and spoke and we created a sheet. But since James isn't here today, I'm going to push this for two weeks, i- if you're not here, Dave can speak to this. Okay, so I'm not, I told you I was gonna speak on this today, but.
Is there any questions I can answer on the sheet, or?
No, I, it, it, I just wanted them to know what it is. If you want to speak about it, go ahead, and then, you know, James can either watch the video or whatever, but if you want to look at it, John, this is a sheet, and Byron will tell you how, tell them how it works, Byron.
Yeah, it's just a daily stat sheet, um, it records your mileage, uh, runs that you were given, pickup runs, uh, whatever you encounter. It's just something they fill out each, each shift as they get through the shift.
Sure.
And it's just an easy way to record their stats.
Yeah, I like it. It gets you better, easier if you go through these at the end of the month, or every two weeks to give us reports. You would have a lot of information right in your tips.
Um, it also gives the officer the, you know, because everything is so digital now.
Yeah.
Um, sometimes by having that sheet, it kind of brings things to, to mind that I need to do this or do that.
And then lastly, Byron, um, last meeting you asked about doing the NRCAN out front, and, and it was approved.
Mm-hmm.
So are you going to start that?
Yeah, well, I was before Monday's survey date.
Yeah, that's my question.
And I've reached out to Public Health to get more marking, and I haven't heard back from the lady, so I will probably hold that off until I get back, not the.
Yeah, that was gonna be my question, in order to pass out marking, does it have to be you?
Does not have to be me, it can be any, anybody I select.
Okay.
Yeah, so it can be me.
So you're literally standing out there an hour, uh, a week, and you're passing out marking to people who pull out, and you're filling out paperwork that who you're giving it to, and that's it. And it can be anybody that you designate, it can be anybody, and you could designate me if I so desire.
Yep.
Okay, well, if you want to move forward, uh, at some point in time, you think about it and everything.
Okay.
Um, but, uh, I just didn't think with you going out, that we want to tie up, uh, the police department right now.
Yeah, no, I, I did.
And so that was it, that's all I got, sir.
Okay, okay. So, sir, do you have any questions, Paul? Okay, at this point, I'll open the floor for any, uh, questions for the police chief. Hearing none, I close the floor. Thank you, sir. Next on, on the, uh, agenda would be Chief Arnold.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Uh, the only update I have is unfortunately, we failed our tire levy by some, some margins, uh, again. So there's definitely downsized incoming, um, please be patient, we can call nine one one for EMS or fire, or that's hard to say, but it's the reality of the situation we're in.
So Chief, I made a comment, you know, on, when we had our interviews, that, um, we would be having a meeting to go over, um, what we're going to do. Things have changed a little bit because it's like, okay, what's gonna go on with this, uh, doorway with property tax and et cetera. So what we need to do is set up a time that we can, uh, get the whole board together and be able to look at options of, uh, what you would like to perceive as your department kind of look like. So, at your convenience, if you can get with Steve, and we will, um, look at scheduling and seeing what we're, what's next for Franklin Township.
Sounds good.
I, oh, is there any questions?
No, no.
I have a question about, so, uh, are we still to expect brownouts?
Oh, yes.
Okay, cause I noticed there hasn't been any in like a week and couple of days since selection.
No, that's just on me, I just haven't taxed him.
Okay, and then, um, are the guys picking up the signs? Cause I still have sign, I still see signs out. Uh, I, the two that you guys gave me, I put on my truck, I dropped off to one of your gentlemen yesterday, I just wanted you to know they were returned. But I still see them, Frank Road, Brown Road, Central Point, so we need to, uh, get those signs picked up.
I realize that.
Appreciate that.
I'm sure hopefully we can use them again.
Yeah.
That's all I got, sir.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to open the floor if there's any questions for our chief. Hearing none, I close the floor, and sir, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up on, on here is our border department, Mr. Stevens.
Hello, everybody.
How are you, Jim?
I'm holding glasses on so I can see what I'm doing here. Uh, I got some, uh, some stats I didn't have about this last week, uh, or at the last meeting, the guys were out on the road and we weren't able to get together. Cause the way that we compile these, I've got one gentleman that just lists everything to go down in days. Um, I'll read through this here as quick as I can, and it, some of that goes through even just this last week. Uh, but we picked up thirty loads of brush, we boat mowed all of our alleys one time, so we're getting ready to go back through again. We're gonna watch and see how everything is actually growing back up. We put twenty-nine loads of asphalt grindings in our alleys due to the triangleing up in Broadmont and to that area. Uh, which if some of you had ever seen it, I know you gentlemen have, we had a mountain of grindings back there that is now pretty much gone. So I'm about to try to sweep talk the county and see if we can get us some more with the road paving that we're doing. Uh, along with that, with the grindings, we do have some alleys that are actually asphalt alleys that have potholes, including one that's over in Briggsdale. It doesn't do us any good to put the grindings in an asphalt, at a pothole on an asphalt. Because so the rain, car goes over, it blows out. Um, our asphalt supplier, who we go through with Decker, they have shut down for routine maintenance, they will not be fired back up until the nineteenth. So the moment we get fired back up there on the nineteenth, then we'll be able to.
The nineteenth of this month?
Get picked, yes, and we'll be able to get picked back up on that, because we do have some other potholes that we're still trying to address that are out in the roadways. Uh, just unfortunately, with all the rain that we have, it's hard to get back in and patch potholes that are holding water, so, uh, that's it. Did a storm drain repair on El Paso, we jetted out the drain on Fisher Road, shot all the elevations on Fisher Road. We had a resident there that owns a business and we were having some issues with the drainage, and we were actually able to figure out exactly the direction of flow, which we kind of thought we knew where that was going. Um, we are working a little bit further on that, we should be able to help him out now to help possibly keep his business from flooding. Um, we had an outside hose bib on this building here that didn't longer work, we got that fixed, completed, rebuilt that. So far today, to date, we've sent out sixty mow letters. Um, unfortunately, all the rain we've had in the last few weeks has kind of held us back and we're not gonna go out and mow. The guys have been mowing out for the last two days. One, one thing that we're actually kind of noticing with a lot of these houses is, we've got a lot of vacant homes in the township. A lot of the homes that we've sent letters to, you get there, um, actually I was riding around today, and there's a lot of vacant homes. So once we get the letter sent to the, um, the actual homeowner on file, some of those homeowners on file are that address. So you know it's going to there and then they're gonna come back to us, or it's gonna sit in their mailbox. Um, but everything is timing out, the guys are extremely busy today, trying to get caught up on that. We have mowed all of the township properties and rideaways two times now. Um, some of you may have noticed, we pulled in today that we painted all the parking spots and installed parking blocks out here in the parking lot. Uh, what we, Mr. Mazur, I think we added a total of six more spots out there by, by painting those lines, I think it turned out okay. We have an overheating issue with the back door, I was able to get that taken care of to save costs from sending it out to get it taken care of. Uh, rebuilt, complete rebuild of a catch basin in Briggsdale that had collapsed, uh, we got that taken care of. Servicing our mowers to get ready for what the guys are doing right now. Um, took four complete dump truck loads of trash out of our alleys. Um. Cleaned up the homeless camp off of Wilson Road, took two days to be ready to get in, I think the guys did a great job getting that taken care of.
How many, how long was that there for, would you say, was that there three months, two months?
John, I tell you, I think I noticed it because of the, when I really noticed it was the big, huge blue tent that they put up. When they put that tent up, that's when I actually noticed it coming around the hill, to be quite honest with you, uh, I didn't notice it till about maybe two or three weeks prior.
I just can't understand how we got that much trash in there in that time.
When you come over the ridge, if you're not sitting in a hire truck, it's kind of hard to see, but then they put that big blue tent up and that was a flag, like, hey, we're down here. But, yeah, the guys did a great job getting that all cleaned up down there. Um, Townshipwide, we need all the guardrails, we have a project getting ready to put together, going and repaint all of our guardrails with new reflectors. Um, they did some work in Robin's office, we was able to come in and move all our stuff in and out of her office again. Um, we have been out looking at, I, I personally have been out looking at, uh, new mowers, been in multiple places, uh, demoed with them and getting quotes. Um, up on, on Gero, we had to go up and we ran a drainage camera on some, some drainage that, we had a resident up on Gero that was getting a little bit of backup back into his house from his sun pump. Come to find out that I think his problem lied from the drainage back to his house, so that was on him, but we got that taken care of for him. Um, we've been working out here, if you get an opportunity, yesterday, yesterday, I was able to actually lay out where the new building's going to lay. That way you, you kind of got a visual on just where it's gonna be and how big this building's gonna be. I had the guys take the boom mower, trim the trees back so we can be able to do that. We had a sign up on Westport because of a major accident right before the mosque was getting ready to have their, uh, Friday thing. Received a phone call, we dropped a weevil's lawn when I barely replaced a stop sign that people, cause the sign was not there and they just kept going through it, so we took that. Uh, we're ramping up for our crack seal program, and last but not least, we have put our summer help, uh, advertisement out on our social media. We have received a few applications, we're gonna start interviewing through those kids. I've reached out to some superintendents of schools and kind of had them put the feelers out for kids that are heading out of school, that this is something that we're doing. So, that's it on stats, any questions on that one?
Any questions from the board? Jim, you have quotes on the mower, the reason I'm asking, um, if the, if the trustees are comfortable with this, cause I know you need to get this mower, but you were able to get three quotes.
Yeah, that's the next thing on my agenda.
Okay, perfect.
Got that. Um, any other questions on our stats or, uh, until today? We're good?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, last thing I have on the agenda, and I brought it up in one of the last meetings, that we now have, we've got mower, we've got mowers that are over ten years old that's been in our fleet. And what everybody needs to understand is when we're out mowing, we're not just out mowing like a regular yard, we're mowing some stuff, and we got into it today, grass because of all the rain, and you can't get in a mower and grass this high. So we beat the mowers up pretty good, but I mean, we maintain all of our maintenance to keep them going. But I, I emailed all this to you, but I didn't know if you brought it with you, so I just wanna have that.
I've got all, you have everything?
Yeah, okay, so I brought everybody a copy of where we're at, I know we're supposed to get three quotes. And what we're, what we're looking at is a scag zero mower, a fifty-two hundred scag zero mower. One of the reasons why we went with this mower is because it's got the higher, um, horsepower.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six horsepower engine. Like I was saying, when we're getting into grass, we're trying to cut grass this high, if you think about it, even with your home block mower, it's a little bit difficult. So now we've got, uh, looking at this scag mower, which is, and it is, it's, it's a more expensive mower, but it's top of the line for the commercial type work that we do. Um, we have received three quotes, and it looks like after getting all of these quotes, and it, and it is an apples for apples quote, that Hilliard Lawn and Garden, um, actually has the best quote on the, on this mower. If you look at the bottom of that first page, you'll see that while I was doing our twenty twenty-five budget, I was able to build that money into our budget, knowing that hopefully we were gonna be able to replace one of our mowers. Our oldest mowers in the fleet. If you turn to the second page of the presentation that I've got, it actually shows from the budget that I put together, it's gonna show the, uh, the fund that it comes out of, the line item, the amount. I was able to take care of things over the last couple of years, hopefully being able to get into this situation to where we were actually able to budget fifteen thousand dollars into that line item, so. I, I'm asking, and I think, Mr. Mazur, you may have.
I do have a resolution, so I.
Do you want to do that now, or are we gonna do your resolutions?
We can do it now, sir, if you'd like.
Okay, yes, sir, if we just do it now, and then that way it's taken care of.
I don't have the resolution to read, so you have.
I just had Nicole print it out for me, so I have it, I'll read it for him, yep.
You got it, bud.
Uh, this is Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero six six, it's a resolution approving the purchase of a zero turn mower. Be resolved that the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio approves and authorizes the purchase of a scag zero turn mower at an expense not to exceed eleven thousand five hundred dollars from Hilliard Lawn and Garden. And I have the, uh, uh, quote attached. To be resolved that all formal actions in this board concerning and relating to this resolution were passed in an open meeting of the board. And all deliberations of the board and any of its committees have resulted in such formal actions. Were in a meeting open to the public in compliance with section one two one point two two the ORC. This resolution shall be declared an emergency and be in full force and effective immediately upon its adoption.
If there's no further questions on said resolution, I would ask for a second. I'll second it. I've got the second, I'd ask for a real call when ready. Um. Mr. Fleschman?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
And Mr. Leeser's excused.
Gentlemen, thank you, and I'll reach out to Sonny over at Hilliard Lawn and Garden, it, it will take about a week for him to get it in.
Yeah, tell him we said thanks so much, because I know that they've been more than graceful with the Franklin Township.
We bought, uh, we bought quite a few of our mowers through them, and he, he really takes care of the township.
Yeah, so let him know that the board is, we, we noticed that.
Absolutely, I will. Um, one of the only other things I think if you want me to touch base on, we're wrapped with Fisher Road.
Sure.
Um, Fisher Road, the situation that we have going on up there at Fisher Road, we have a business, I'll call it, a, a business up there that has, and to know, they didn't realize what they were doing, I think. But what they were doing is they're parking vehicles over into a, um, a partial that is owned, it was going to be a road years ago. This road that was supposed to be a road years ago is not added into our road mileage, so it's just considered a property of the township. That they're actually impeding over onto a township property, um, they just put on new gravel in there this weekend. So I went up with Chief Smith, and we went up and we actually met with, uh, the people that run a granite business in the back, took them outside. I physically was able to show them about right where our property line's going to be, and instructed to him that we will be putting cables down through there, and they will no longer be able to utilize that area. I think if you think about it in the gist of things, it could also come into a liability issue if somebody was to get hurt on the township property, so we need to eliminate that, so. So, went back up there today. We took some measurements. Nicole was able to give me in a roundabout measurement on where our property line is. Went up today and painted green hash marks down through there and, um, they will, nobody was in that building when I went back around there this morning, but I'll go back over there tomorrow morning and I'll physically take them out and show them this is about where this cable is going to go. So, we are working on that. We're getting it ready to go and that's pretty much.
Sure. Is there any more questions from the board?
I don't have anything.
Administrator? I'm going to open the floor for any quick questions that you may have for our road department. Sir, go ahead.
That road, I mean, that Cromwell Drive, there, there's eight building lots that, that their address to that, that I own, their address to that road.
We, not to interrupt, go ahead. I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt you.
No, I, I just want to let you know.
We have situations like that actually in another area over off of Ray Avenue where the property itself at one time was probably going to be developed. And because it was going to be developed, it's got to differ, you know, property layout. And that's the same thing with Cromwell, but I think when they put in the freeway back in the 60s, correct me?
68.
I was a little bit younger then.
64, maybe?
Yeah, when they, when they put 70 in back there, Cromwell used to go across that way, but they, that's pretty much was negated. They're not going to use that anymore. But yeah, you're right. It's laid out with different.
There's a sewer line that runs under there too.
Yeah. There's a storm line that runs back through there, which is another thing when I was in there with the gentleman and I told him, I said, here's another reason we can't have you driving over top of that. So, he, he understood me and Chief Smith, he understood us this time.
But, well, I guess what I'm trying to say is that, that road could be put in someday. Cause I.
Yeah.
Cause that's the only way we can get to the property in the back, which has a different zoning.
Yeah, I just know at this time now, because I get, um, and the board gets it too, every year we get a road mileage report where they actually, they're measuring all of our roadways and then that's, we actually get funding based off of that. And I do know the only Cromwell that is being used or being used for that, um, equation is on the other side of the freeway. And they don't use that one because it's considered, that, that one's considered a, um, unimproved. So, it's like it's not gravelled and there's nothing. Well, it's got some little bit of gravel in it right now. Yeah, it's got a little bit.
So, I mean, is there any way you can get it so that you could get account for that?
Maybe that's something that I've never, ever had to do, but I'm sure I can probably check into that and see what avenue we would be able to do that. But then to do that, I think we would have to come back in then and do a lot of improvement on that road.
And we'd actually have to turn it into a road.
And all the cabling, we'd have to take the cabling down at that time.
My suggestion would be, we know it's there. Leave sleeping dogs sleep. And then when, if you ever go to develop it, you know that that's there and it's designated for that. So, I don't see where that would be a problem because the county is the one that, as you said, the county told you what it was. It's on county record. So, no matter who sits in these seats, it's on county record.
Okay.
Because if we start opening that up and et cetera.
Oh, we don't really want it opened up.
Right, right. But I mean, if we was to clear it, open it and, and designate it, then, then anyone's allowed to drive back there.
Right. You would have people driving back and back and back.
We just want to be left alone.
Yeah, we just, what I'm saying is it's, it's, I don't know, it should be a road. It should be, I mean, the county was taking care of it. Like, we've been there for 40 years. Like before, when we had a problem there, the county took care of it.
Yeah.
Now they won't, they don't want to do it and they sent, they said, you guys got to do it.
Right, passed the buck, so. But yeah, I mean, at some point in time, if you go to develop that, I mean, I'm sure as things go out this way, it's not going to be long, people knocking on your door that are saying, hey, we're, you know, it's everywhere now in that area. It's coming from Travy Road this way. And I have heard from several people that, um, developers are just going up, knocking on, uh, the door and offering unbelievable prices, so.
Not at my house.
So, um, any, so any other questions here and then I close the floor.
Oh, you had a question?
Did you? Go ahead.
I just, I had a comment. When the fellows dug out the ditches there on Ray and they took down the school speed limit sign and it's still not backed up. And, and I mean, they can't read the big numbers on the, you know, speed limit sign. They can't read the big painted, says school.
We came in and dug out the ditches. I don't know.
Whether it was the township or the county, because I've heard mixed on who actually did that.
I don't remember the guys going down through there. I, but I will double it. I will double check.
Uh, yeah, cause.
But I don't think we went down through there digging.
I know it was county and then the neighbor said, no, it was the township that came down through there. And it was weird because it's only in spots.
If they did, if they did that.
And, and it's, it's huge. I mean, this thing.
Yeah, I don't, I can't really see us going down and going.
I.
If we're going to clean out a ditch, we're going to start a one end and go all the way through.
Well, yeah, I don't, don't do it to mine, not what they did to others, because this is like the Suez Canal. I mean, it's, I'm serious.
I almost mentioned the same, but I'll know.
But they took down, they took down the actual school speed limit, which we don't need any other encouragement to do 90 down through there.
But I will check with them. I, I just, I don't have any recollection whatsoever. They would have had it done that without me knowing where they were going.
They actually left the equipment sit there overnight and was supposed to be coming. And I know you guys don't leave your equipment.
We would never leave equipment laying, sitting out on the roadway overnight.
Okay.
They're not allowed to do that.
No, I didn't think so. I, it didn't sound like, didn't sound like anything you signed off on, so.
Okay, well, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Uh, moving on, we now, Jim Stevens, our department, fiscal department. So, Mr., to the board, to everyone. I got this text message today. Let me just get to it. Which one was it? Okay, so this came in today. Today's the meeting day. This come from Lindsay. Steve, I suggest you get with Julie before today's meeting. Things are not looking good for them in the township if I move forward on things and I pull this trigger, so to say. Which you know, I don't know if you really care or not. Considering the property taxes are about to be voted on in November, on November, and you're not going to have a job either come January if it passes. I have no idea what that means and no idea why that has anything to do with coming in here. I have no idea why you send someone a threatening email saying someone's going to pull the trigger. I have no idea what she means by that. I don't know, but I would just say come in here and you can talk to the public and, and if there's things you need, you come here to get them. I, I don't know. It's bizarre. So, um, that's what I've got on fiscal.
I would say we don't work under threats.
No.
There's been other communications sent to the other trustees and Mr. Mazer have not been in contact with the fiscal officer whatsoever. So, this is just a good example of why we can't work well with others. And it's why we cannot have someone like this be amongst our employees who are here. It's not a good working environment and it is our responsibilities as trustees to not put our employees in a position to where they have to work in a hostile workplace. And so, that's basically all I'll say is, is if you, you've been invited to meetings. Been invited to meetings. Uh, we've been told you're only going to come every quarter. And so, we're looking forward to the next quarter. When you do come, be prepared to do something than to sit there and say, Mr. Mazer has everything. We would love to hear what you're doing. And, uh, I will not vote to pay the fiscal officer until work is being done. So, that's where I'm at on that.
Sure, you know, this is, um, an elected official by the body of the people. I know that there is, uh, things being worked on for what is called a recall where there'll be a new election. And then if the, if the, if the recall is successful, then that person is no longer in, then obviously we get somebody else. In my opinion, the caliber of a person that sends threats that they're going to pull the trigger, there's no effing way I'm going to come in and sign anything because we had issues where we were trying to get the levy on the ballot. It's none of our personal opinions. If, if I'm totally against a, a levy going on, I shouldn't vote yes and I shouldn't vote no. I should vote, is it something that the public needs? Is there a need for the public? Are we obviously going to close down a station? So, me voting yes to put it on the levy, just to have someone else now has to certify what the board's said. You don't send a text going, there's no effing way that I'm going to sign this text. And I'm, I think you're reading the lines what the words were. It's your duty to do that. But to hamstring the board, the township, people getting paid, what Mr. Mazer's had to go through, what the taxpayers had to pay, we have other people coming in to do the work and we have stopped paying her. And I'm not going to pay her if there's, go, my advice is get an attorney. I don't know what to tell you, but I'm not doing anything until I'm told I have to. So, it's your money. We're responsible for it and you guys deserve to have someone that is going to do what they said they were going to do. And we're not seeing it. Our meeting dates has not changed. I get, I was until I've asked not to receive any more texts. She watches every one of these and then she likes to argue about what was said. I brought in meetings and I shared and I've laid down copies for people to see. What I read, I word, word for word, I don't ad lib to it, I don't add to it. She commented that I changed things or I said something or however she said it. So, I'm like, fine, I'll just print off everything. There was a threat, how would you like to have a records request to go back? I think it was five days or whatever it was. I'll do a record request for the last year. I'll print everything out. It doesn't matter. I will set it here and anyone that wants a copy can have it. I'm sure she wasn't too happy when people read the type of content that is spoken to us. How does someone like that be responsible for your dollars and cents in, in this township? And with as much issues that we have going on to deliberately, in my opinion, put a roadblock in from us even putting the levy on the ballot? Now, we look at it, it failed by 33 votes. So, what about out of the 500 and some people that voted, the people that wanted to vote for it and the people that wanted to vote no for it? She almost was able to railroad that if it wasn't for our administrator, for anyone to have a say in it. And that in itself is not right. When we put something out there, it's for you guys to vote on. We don't have a say of, why didn't you vote yes or thank you for, we can say whatever, our opinions amongst ourselves. But the board itself is to see a need and actually put it out there for the public to decide. We work for the public. Ms. Justice works for the public and she doesn't come to work. We've had nothing but issues from before that we had resolutions that said you couldn't be here. And every time we do something, there's a new issue. Either you want to do the work or you don't. Now we're into issues that are like, well, I don't have a cord to my computer. I don't have this. Well, if a frog had wings, it wouldn't bump its rear. I mean, just, you know where we are. The address hasn't changed. You come get what you need if you want to work from home. It, we can, we cannot spoon feed somebody that doesn't want to work. Any of you that had children before, when they're full or they don't want to eat it, they're not going to take it. We cannot, as a board of trustees, sit here and make her do the job. But you as residents are the voting power. You're the one that has the power. So, I think I spent enough time on that, so we'll move on. Um, sir, if you would do her job for her? Since there's no one here to do it, it has to be done?
The first motion I have is, uh, to approve payroll. Uh, be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board makes a motion to approve the employee payroll for the pay period, March 23rd, 2025, through April 5th, 2025, in the amount of $178,453.92. And direct deposit on April 11th, 2025. And the electronic vouchers were 1038, 2025 through 1114, 2025. And, um, the exhibits are attached.
Okay, if there's no further question in said matter, I'd ask for a second.
I'll second it.
I've got the second and you, roll call, sir, when ready.
Uh, Mr. Fleschman?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
And Mr. Leeser's excused. Okay. And the next I have is a motion to approve accounts payable. Be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board makes a motion to approve accounts payable from April 1st, 2025 through April 11th, 2025, in the amount of $114,968.33. From ACH vouchers, 948, 2025 through 1105, 2025. And warrant number is 70747-dash-70773. And again, the exhibits are attached.
If there's no further questions, I'd ask for a second.
I'll second it.
Here in the second, I'd ask for a roll call when ready, sir.
Mr. Fleschman?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
And Mr. Leeser's excused. Now I have, um, motion to approve payroll, um, by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board makes a motion to approve the employee payroll for the pay period of April 20th, 2025 through May 3rd, 2025, in the amount of $182,825.09. Direct deposit on May 9th, 2025. Through electronic vouchers, 1211, 2025 through 1277, 2025. And again, the exhibit is attached.
If there's no further question, I'd ask for a second.
I'll second it.
And there's a second and I'd ask for a roll call when ready.
Mr. Fleschman?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
And Mr. Leeser's excused. The last one I have is a motion to approve accounts payable. Be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board makes a motion to approve accounts payable from May 1st, 2025 through May 13th, 2025, in the amount of $5,124.15. From electronic payment vouchers, 1209, 2025 through 1285, 2025. And the exhibit is attached.
If there's no further questions, I'd ask for a second.
I do have a question, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
It just seems out of the norm, uh, and I tried to go back and check last month. We have a gas bill, um, and I'm sure there are probably two different buildings or something, but we got a gas bill for 24121 and then we got a gas bill for 1,04724.
Okay.
And then on the electric, we have multiple electric bills, but then we have one for $1,500. These, both of these two seem to be adnormally high. Um, could it just be, could, uh, could someone just check into it, please?
We will, and I think what's happening, Mr. Blevins, is with the electric, we have five services to five buildings.
You think that adds together, is that what you mean?
I, I think we're getting an individual bill for each building on the electric, but I will verify this for you.
Okay. But even the monthly though, month by month, there's a huge spike and the weather has still been somewhat.
And the weather has still been somewhat.
No, no, I'll research this, I'm just off the top of my head. I think the gas is, we have one service here for five buildings, four or five buildings. And then I think at a separate fire station, we have a different gas service for that.
Okay.
But I will absolutely verify that.
Okay, that, and that makes sense. And I'm not, I think we should, you go ahead and approve the bill because these are both entities. That if there was a mistake, we could get it back because we do business with these people all the time. So I don't feel like we're not taking care of the people's money. But those two seem to stick out like a sore thing. The other day when I was looking at it, I'm, it really wasn't the other day, it was last night because I had trouble with the iPad and I meant to say something. And I just saw it here again and I just wanted to question it. But I feel comfortable to go ahead if you do, sir.
Yep, so are you seconding?
I am seconding.
Okay, I have a second and we'll call when you're ready, sir.
Mr. Blevins, seconded up?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
And Mr. Leeser is excused. Okay. All right, Chairman, I have a few resolutions. The first one is it's a, it's Resolution 2025-067. It's a resolution approving the obligations authorized by the township administrator. And the Board of Trustees in Resolution 2021-130 authorized the township administrator to approve obligations of $10,000 or less on behalf of the township in accordance with Section 507.11 of the ORC. And pursuant to the provisions of Section 507.11A of the ORC, the obligations approved by the administrator must subsequently be approved by the adoption of a formal resolution of the Board of Trustees. Therefore, be resolved by the Board of Township Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, the obligations authorized by the township administrators presented in Exhibit A attached heretofore hereby approved. All formal actions of this board concerning and relating to the adoption of this resolution were passed in an open meeting of this board. And that all deliberations of this board and any of its committees that result in such formal actions were in meetings open to the public in compliance with Section 121.22 of the ORC. This resolution shall be declared emergency and will be in full force effective immediately upon its adoption.
Here in resolution, is there any questions to said resolution? Here are none.
I'll second it.
Okay. You have a second and sir, when you're ready.
Uh, Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
And Mr. Leeser is excused. I have resolution. Which resolution is that, John? Is that 66?
I think you're on 68.
Yeah, and right here, 60, I think it was, that was tucked in with this one.
Okay, we'll do that one right now.
Okay.
Thank you. This is Resolution 2025-068. It's a resolution approving the time change for regular Board of Trustee meetings beginning in June and ending in August of 2025. Be resolved that the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio approves and authorizes the first Thursday, Board of Trustees' regular meeting each month commencing June 12th through August 7th, 2025 shall begin at 5:30 PM. The specific dates are June 12th, 2025, July 10th, 2025, and August 7th, 2025, all on Thursday. Then be it further resolved that all formal actions of this board concerning and relating to this resolution were passed in an open meeting of the board and that all deliberations of the board and any of its committees that result in such formal actions were in meetings open to the public in compliance with Section 121.22 of the ORC. This resolution shall be declared emergency and be in full force and effective immediately upon its adoption.
Sir, do you feel comfortable moving forward with this with the just two of us or would you want a full committee?
I do feel comfortable because Mr. Leeser was for it last week.
Okay. So if there's no further questions, I'd ask for a second.
I'll second it.
Here in the second, I will ask for a roll call.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
And Mr. Leeser is excused.
I believe this statement was, he just wanted to get it over with, so.
Sure, sure.
We're going to do that.
So we just need, we just need, we just need Mr. Blevins.
Yeah, no, no, I'm not.
Mike, that was 68, is that right?
That was 68.
That was 69.
Okay. The next resolution is a resolution approving the removal of trees and stumps from Union Cemetery located on Frank Road. Be resolved that the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio approves and authorizes the removal of trees that were damaged during a recent storm at Union Cemetery on Frank Road, property owned by Franklin Township. Be it further resolved, the lowest and best bid was accepted by Pederman Brothers Tree Service for the removal of the trees in the amount of $6,087. The insurance company will submit to the township a payment of $6,087 for the removal of trees, and there's an exhibit attached for the quote. Then be it further resolved that there's an additional cost of $690 for the removal of the trumps. This expense is not covered by the insurance claim and is a cost to the township. Thus, all actions of this board concerning and related to this resolution were passed in an open meeting of the board and that all deliberations of the board and any of its committees that result in such formal actions were in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including Section 121.22 of the ORC. This resolution shall be declared emergency and be in full force and effective immediately upon its adoption.
If there's no further questions on the matter?
And I'll second it.
Okay, here in the second, I will ask for a roll call.
Uh, Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
And Mr. Leeser is excused.
I think you're down to.
I need, on that one, I need to add an attachment for the tree removal. But I will make sure that gets added.
We're skipping 70?
Nope, I got it right here.
Oh, okay.
No, I was just saying, I need to attach an exhibit to that, to 69.
Okay, you need it back then?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
Let me just update this. Okay, Resolution 2025-070. It's a resolution approving the repair replacement of fencing. Be resolved that the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio approves and authorizes the repair replacement of fencing caused by fallen trees at Union Cemetery due to a storm. Be it further resolved that the lowest and best bid was accepted by the Bound and Fence Company in the amount of $14,206. Township's insurance company will submit to the township a payment of $11,706 for the repair replacement of the fencing, and the exhibit is attached. But then again, be it further resolved that the township will be responsible for the insurance deductible of $2,500. That all formal actions of this board concerning and related to this resolution were passed in an open meeting of the board and that all deliberations of the board and any of its committees that result in such formal actions were in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including Section 121.22 of the ORC. This resolution shall be declared emergency and be in full force and effective immediately upon its adoption.
With said resolution, if there's no questions, I'd ask for a second.
No questions, I'll second it.
And a roll call when you're ready, sir.
Uh, Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
And Mr. Leeser is excused. And I have Resolution 2025-071. It's a resolution approving a construction agreement with the AEP. Be resolved that the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, the board approves and authorizes the township administrator to enter into a contribution in aid of construction agreement with AEP for electric service to the new road department building. Be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees approves the expenditure not to exceed $750. Be it further resolved that all formal actions of this board concerning and relating to this resolution were passed in an open meeting of the board and that all deliberations of the board and any of its committees that result in such formal actions were in meetings open to the public and in compliance with Section 121.22 of the ORC. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall be declared emergency and be in full force and effective immediately upon its adoption.
If there's no said discussion, I'd ask for a second.
I'll second it.
Having the second, I'd ask for a roll call when you're ready.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
And Mr. Leeser is excused. There are just a couple of discussion items. The first one is, we have used Sedgwick as our managed care organization, medical care organization since I've been here the last almost four years. And they would like us to renew our agreement with them. Now, I use them every day, I have never had any issues with the company whatsoever. They handle all our BWC and insurance claims, which takes a big burden off of us. But like I said, this agreement is going to renew. And I just wanted to get it out there for the trustees. It's a decision we do not have to make today. But just to make you aware that this renewal is coming here in the future.
I've actually sit on, in.
You have, you have.
I have actually had to call and have a conversation with the gentleman one time on something that.
Ken Maine?
Yep.
Ken Maine?
Sure did. So I have no problem myself.
I have no problem, do you wish to proceed?
He said it doesn't happen.
No, 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 what I can do in our next meeting, I can bring a resolution to the trustees.
Sure.
And.
Has a problem, speak up.
Yep. Okay, what else you have?
And the last thing I have, Chief Arnold, I'm going to need your help with this one.
Sure.
This is, it is called a SQL server upgrade. And I have been with the help of Chief Arnold and Jason Brockmeyer working with our IT consultant, Revolution Group. And it's, it's an upgrade, chief, to maintain records. This is why I'm going to need your help.
Yeah.
You need to maintain it for how many years?
For the most part, forever. From like 2013 to 2018-ish, we use a reporting software format. That would, it works in a different way than your Windows-based everything else on Earth. And so three to four years worth of EMS and fire records are stored on a server. We have to keep EMS records. For example, if you are on a run where a child was born, you have to keep that EMS report available for the lifetime of that child. So we end up keeping these things for decades, if not centuries, if it ever gets that far. So the server, all of these things were stored on, was archaic, apparently at the time when they were stored on it. And we are now unable to access those runs just because we can't get into that server because that server is broke. So this was Revolution Group's best and easiest way to upgrade all of that, to upgrade that server and make it accessible again.
Okay.
And just to reiterate the need, I had a call, we had a subpoena come through last week, subpoenaing a run from that timeframe. And then a sergeant at Columbus Police just called me this morning and asked for an update on, are we going to be able to access that run in what kind of timeframe because there's a court case involved in it?
So you need this in perpetuity, they just need to be forever?
Pretty much.
So what we have, oh, sorry.
You take the volume of runs that come through and that you store, I mean, you could get rid of some of them, but you can never get rid of all of them. And like building records for inspection records have to be around for the lifetime of the building.
Thank you.
You just got to start there.
Were we asking for rest in today?
So, no, no, I'm just going to, I'm just going to explain to the trustees basically the cost of upgrading this server. The actual hardware. The quote from Revolution Group is $2,085.06. Then the cost to install the service is an additional $2,000. So we're looking at roughly $4,085.06. Chief, you have it budgeted or?
Uh, it's not budgeted, but I'm like, I'm like the board.
Okay.
It's just going to affect other stuff, but it's how we do it.
Okay, and we'll make, we'll make the numbers work.
Yeah.
We'll make it work somehow.
And the $2,000 to install it, gentlemen, a lot of that is getting the old information off that broken server and putting it on to a new one. It's, I don't, I think that's a pretty time consuming. The market's not just them coming in and plugging it in and charging us too many.
So what I will need from the trustees is a motion to let me start this process. Where I can get to Rev Group and say, okay, let's get moving on this.
So I'm going to, if it pleases the board, be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board gives permission to our administrators, administrator, to, I had it in my head, Steve Mazer, to facilitate in working with Revolution Group on said server for the fire department. If there's no further question in it, I'd ask for a second.
I'll second it.
Okay. Do you have a roll? And a roll call when ready, sir.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
And Mr. Leeser is excused. And two other things, we have Representative Christine Cockley, who would like to visit our next meeting on the 29th. We have Senator DeMore here, this is Representative Cockley.
Hopefully they can hear the same things and concerns.
Yes, and then the only other thing I have is our accountant. Chris Kirby was able to reconcile our January 2025 bank. So I just need again, another motion for the trustees to sign that. And he, Chris doesn't, he's doing it a little differently. He's going to have all this information for the trustees. And basically, it's in the trustees' hands and you can see how we are reconciling every month.
We haven't had this in some time. And what you're hearing right now, this would have been the work of the fiscal department. And it has balanced. I don't think we've ever had that before, have we?
Jeff, Jeff was doing it, we just weren't getting these documents.
Right.
But now, the way Chris is doing his processes, he wants you to. But now, the way Chris is doing his processes, he wants you to see those and sign off on those.
We definitely should see that and then sign off on them. But Ms. Justice, in the time she was here, I don't believe she personally have done any of these? Or did she work with anyone on it?
No.
Or the knowledge on how to do it?
That takes a little, that takes a little bit of work. I think once Chris gets our process in place and does it month after month, I think...
That's what he does.
This took a lot of work. It's taken him a lot of work for February and March, too.
So at this point, do you want a resolution, a motion, or a motion to accept? Or do we even need that? You're just providing it to us.
I think if you make a motion that you accept the reconciliation, then we get the trustees to sign off on it.
Yeah, yeah. Let's just, it's great.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
Right. There's nothing to sign, but we at least acknowledge that we received it and that we...
Are there lines at the end?
On the bottom. Yeah. So we'll put that in the next meeting if we can.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Steve, I have all these piled up for you.
Great.
Do you want to?
Great. No, that's terrific.
Right on the clipboard, because that's what you...
And that will remind me to attach that exhibit.
So Mr. Mazur is not here. He's absent today.
Mr. Leeser.
Excuse me.
I get that a lot. I think it's wishful thinking.
And I really don't have anything, but I look, I see that light's out. So I don't know if it was charged. That one's on. I'm just curious. I guess I can go back and watch. I'm hoping that the residents and the guests that wish to watch on YouTube or meetings are able to hear us better. So that's the vision. And we are working on speakers that would be in the back so that you guys can also hear. So as we try out this stuff called Bluetooth and different things of that nature, just bear with us. That's all I have. And sir?
I have one thing. So this is for you, Steve. I spent last night going through the township handbook again. And I have marked pages. And I will call you tomorrow. They are highlighted. And that'll tell you what page and everything's on that I wanted to go over and I want to go over with you. So I wanted to give it to you today. And I'll call you tomorrow and you'll have time to, they're highlighted. And then we can talk about those because I had questions on concerns that are ongoing in the township.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Yeah. So at this time, I'm going to open the floor for any questions of anything that was said in the meeting. Mayor, go ahead. Is one?
Boy, it's on for the whole meeting, huh?
The camera? Yeah, it's on for the whole meeting until we adjourn. If you...
You need to speak to somebody after the meeting, Mayor?
Because I can't turn it off. Okay, just give me a, give me a second and I'm gonna adjourn the meeting. And you're allowed to make a statement to your trustees. So is there anyone else has any comments, questions? Here are none? The time is now approximately 1:58 and we are adjourned. Thank you all.